Recording.
Wonderful. Like to welcome you and call to order our January 12th Port Orchard City Council meeting, first meeting of 2021. And pursuant to the governor's stay home, stay safe order, the city council will be conducting this meeting via Zoom. And that the meeting invites with phone numbers and a link to join this meeting were published on our website. So members of the public have the ability to join us this evening. So and now I've amended this agenda because I kept missing the pledge of allegiance and it's in bold red letters. So, so I won't miss it anymore. And so join me in the pledge, I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Not being in the chambers and having the flag there, it just, it's, we just, I don't know why I kept missing it. So it took steps to correct that. All right. So we have an agenda that was presented and I think we need at least one amendment to that agenda. Councilmember Kuchardi?
Yeah, I would like to add item number F to the consent agenda and excusing council member Deener due to work. There's some flooding out there and he was called to do an inspection. He may join later, but we'll go ahead and excuse his absence at this point.
Second.
I get it.
Motion by councilmember Kuchardi and a second by councilmember Rosa Pepe to excuse councilmember Deener for business reasons this evening. And that's been added to our consent agenda as item F. Any further discussion of that amendment? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And raising the hands helps too. Since we're on video, so wonderful. Anybody opposed? Okay. And so that motion carries to add councilmember Deener to the, his excuse to the consent agenda. Any other modifications that you would like to see to this evening's agenda? Not I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as modified.
Second.
The motion by councilmember Claussen, a second by councilmember Lucarelli to approve the agenda as amended. Further discussion of this evening's agenda? You're not all in favor of approving the amended agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, the agenda has been set for this evening. We are to our first citizen comment period and that citizen comment period is for any items on our agenda this evening. So if anyone wash wishes to address the council, just raise your hand or speak up and I will call on you and you have three minutes to address the council for items on the agenda. It's a second citizen comment period at the end of the meeting for all other items. So anyone wishing to address the council this evening? Seeing none, I will close the first citizen comment period. We are to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I was a motion by councilmember Claussen and a second by councilmember Rosa Pepe to approve the amended consent agenda. Any further discussion of the consent items? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We are, we don't have any presentations. We don't have any public hearings. And now we're on to our business items and the first is an exciting move. We've got a new employee who is our new code enforcement officer and per our code, sure, by resolution, you need to approve of this action. So Mr. Bond, this is yours.
Well, I think you covered most of it, Mayor, but under Port Orchard Municipal Code Section 2.64010, the code requires that the city council appoint the code enforcement officer by resolution. And Katie Casada, who is our new code enforcement officer is here tonight so that you can see her face and wave. And she's been working hard with HR and our previous enforcement officer Doug Price to get up to speed. And you will start seeing her more and more out in the community. So the staff recommendation is to approve the resolution as presented. And if anybody has any questions for Katie, I'm sure she can tell, tell you a little bit more about herself. We did hire her away from Port Townsend and I still haven't had time to sit down with her and get to know her as well as I will in the coming days. But if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
So I got to spend about an hour with Katie last week and I was thrilled to make her acquaintance and she did some time on Bainbridge Island before she was at on Port Townsend. But Katie, maybe would you like to talk, tell the council a little bit about yourself?
I'm sure I've been in, worked for municipal government for over, I think, 22 years now. And I started at Bainbridge in the police department and then moved on to public works and planning and was a permit tech for Bainbridge and then moved on after the recession to the city of Seattle and became a permit tech for the city of Seattle and, and then got hired by Port Townsend as their first code enforcement officer. And so for the last four and a half years, I've been focusing on learning a new career and I'm excited to get to apply the skills that I've learned for the city of Port Orchard.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to adopt a resolution appointing Katie Casada as the city's code enforcement officer.
Second.
A motion by councilmember Lucarelli, a second by councilmember Claussen. Anybody else want to grill Katie before?
Other than just to say welcome also. Thank you.
I'm excited to be here and I'm looking forward to working for the city of Port Orchard.
Excited to have you. All right. With that, we have a motion in a second to for with the resolution to appoint our new code enforcement officer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, you're synonymous. You're, you're welcome. All right, we are on to our second order of business, which is item B, the appointment of a mayor pro tem for 2021. And I think that's Clerk Reinderson.
Yes. Good evening, council mayor. So historically, at the first meeting of each calendar year, the council nominates and appoints a mayor pro tem for the current, from the current council members. As a code city, the council can biannually or periodically appoint a mayor pro tem. The statute reads as follows, RCW 35A.12.065, pro tempore appointments by, biannually at the first meeting of a new council or periodically, the members thereof by majority vote may designate one of their, one of their number as mayor pro tem or deputy mayor for such period as the council may specify to serve in the absence or temporary disability of the mayor or in lieu of thereof in the council may also, as the need may arise, appoint a qualified person to serve as a mayor pro tem in the absence or temporary disability of the mayor. In the event of the extended excused absence or disability of a council member, the remaining members by majority vote may appoint a council member pro tem to serve during the absence or disability. The council desires to continue, as I understand it, with annual appointments for a mayor pro tem. Therefore, staff recommends the council recommends a council member to nominate a mayor pro tem to serve for 2021.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
Yes. I move to elect councilwoman Beck Ashby as a mayor pro tem for 2021. And I would like to add that this is kind of an unusual year, just like 2020 was. And I'm looking, I thought it would be great to have someone with historic knowledge who has some time to spend if need be. I'm not sure of the mayor's schedule, but I think this year promises to have quite a lot going on. And Mr. Claussen also has this historic knowledge, but I think Beck has some time and her involvement with the finance committee and transportation also makes her ideal for this year, I believe.
I was second.
Motion by councilmember Lucarelli, a second by councilmember Claussen. Councilmember Ashby, do you accept that nomination?
I would be glad to serve. It would be a pleasure.
It was tough duty this last year. I think Jay ran two meetings.
I'd like to thank everybody for letting me off easy.
Thank COVID. Nobody got so. So we have a motion in a second on the floor nominating councilmember Beck Ashby as the mayor pro tem for 2021. All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Congratulations, councilmember Ashby. We are on to item C, adoption of an ordinance ratifying the suspension of portions of Title 10 pertaining to traffic enforcement due to COVID-19 emergency response and relief. Ms. Archer, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. This evening before you is an ordinance which would ratify the temporary suspension of portions of Title 10 pertaining to traffic enforcement that occurred from the, for the period of April 2020 to June 15, 2020. Beginning in early April 2020, as the pandemic was beginning to ramp up, the mayor reassigned the city's parking enforcement employees to emergency management duties. In addition, the mayor, at the mayor's direction, the public works department secured from use, I believe with bags, pay parking stations and meters that were located in city owned and operated pay lots. The effect of these two acts was to suspend provisions in Title 10, Chapter 12 pertaining to parking enforcement. Specifically fees for those paid parking lots were waived and the enforcement of certain restrictions pertaining to those lots and other parking issues specifically enforced by the parking enforcement team were thereby suspended since the man, the person power was reassigned. The remaining members of the police department continue to enforce sections of Title 10, Chapter 12, particularly those pertaining to emergency response, public safety, ensuring disability parking was preserved. So by this ordinance, again, the council has the sole discretion over the, over the code. And in order to ratify and confirm the mayor's emergency action, the council may by ordinance ratify those actions thereby suspending and confirming the suspension of those provisions in the code. So the, before you this evening again is an ordinance, the ordinance identifies the specific provisions in the municipal code that were suspended for the period of April 1st to June 15, 2020. And adoption of the ordinance would suspend those, would ratify the suspension of those provisions. And I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for county Ms. Marsh, for Ms. Archer? Or is there a motion? Councilmember Kuchardi?
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance ratifying the suspension of portions of the Title 10, Chapter 12 pertaining to traffic enforcement due to COVID-19 emergency response and relief.
Okay.
Motion by councilmember Kuchardi, a second by councilmember Chang to ratify the emergency response related to COVID and parking. Any questions for myself or for Ms. Archer? Just felt it was the right thing to do to beg the parking meters and not, and reassign those folks to emergency response early on during COVID. So with that, all in favor of approving this ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance is approved. We are on to item D, which is adoption, adoption of a resolution, amending resolutions, number 067-20 for the purchase of storm drainage utility remote control flare flail mower for the equipment revolving fund number 500. This kind of seems like Groundhog Day.
It is Groundhog's Day. So on December 15, 2020, the city council approved resolution number 067-20 for the purchase of a storm drainage utility remote control flail mower in the amount of $61,160. However, the applicable sales tax was inadvertently omitted from that approval as this was a purchase through the HGAC by roster, a consortium out of Oregon. This resolution increases the approval to include the applicable sales tax, which is 9%. Staff recommends approving a resolution thereby amending resolution number 067-20 to approve the purchase again of a storm drainage utility remote control flail mower in the amount of $67,160 through the HGAC by roster for equipment rental and revolving fund number 500.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
Move to approve a resolution thereby approving the purchase of a storm drainage utility remote controlled flail mower in an amount of $67,000 through the HGAC by roster for equipment rental and revolving fund number 500 in addition to the fleet.
Second.
A motion by councilmember Lucarelli, a second by councilmember Ashby. So the only change from last time is this, that we've included sales tax. All right, everybody comfortable with that and clear? There were no questions? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved, the resolution is approved. We're to item E, which is adoption of a resolution approving the selection of a preferred site for the South Kitsap Community Center. Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you. On December 8, 2020, the city council reviewed a recommendation by the South Kitsap Community Event Center Steering Committee for a preferred site location for the South Kitsap Community Event Center and directed staff to prepare a resolution approving the site selection. The site, as shown on site option A on exhibit one of this resolution, is the current location of the Kitsap Bank. The staff recommendation is to approve the recommend, the resolution as presented. Thank you.
Councilmember Claussen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the selection of site option A on exhibit one as the preferred site for the South Kitsap Community Event Center.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Claussen, a second by councilmember Kuchardi to approve the site selection process and the site selected for the south new South Kitsap Community Event Center. Any questions for myself or Mr. Bond? Councilmember Ashby?
Sir, I had asked this earlier and I believe there was a discussion by the selection committee, but do we know if the public facilities district will accept leased property as part of our project?
I don't have an answer to that question. You did ask that of me earlier today and it's something that we would need to research. From the preliminary discussions I have with, and have with Noah today, I, I don't think we have a problem, but I'll confirm that with the public facilities district.
Yeah, I'm very pleased with the selection and the process that went through to get this selection. Just want to make sure that we had dotted all our i's and crossed all our t's. Thank you.
You bet. Other questions related to the site selection? And I know we've got another business item related to a letter of intent next, and I've got some additional information I'll share there. So other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the site selection of the Kitsap Bank property? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is passed. We're on to item E, which is the adoption of a resolution. No, I'm on item F. Authorization for the mayor to sign a letter of intent with Kitsap Bank related to the purchase of the 619 Bay Street. So early this evening, the, the property located at 619 Bay Street has, was selected as the site for the 24,000 square foot facility known as South Kitsap Community Event Center. This facility is part of the long-term downtown master plan that incorporates Kitsap Bank's new headquarters, residential and commercial parking solutions and waterfront reclamation. The city would like to submit a letter of intent to the bank, which sets forth in city's intent to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the property. So we recommend that the city council authorize the mayor to sign this letter of intent with the bank related to the purchase of 619 Bay Street. So this letter that's in your packet has been approved, Charlie, our attorney prepared it. It was reviewed by the bank's attorney and it's approved, been approved by, to form by their board and the bank president. But they didn't want to sign it until after the city council authorized my signature. This letter is non-binding. It just says that we're going to work together towards a purchase and sale. It's more for the public facilities district because we had kind of a hiccup in the beginning here where the development community in this, as it was related to this master plan project, selected the 711 site for the community center. When we took the handoff of this, because a private developer can't accept public facilities district. It needs to be a governmental entity. So we've stepped forward as that public partner with the public facilities district. And my first order of business when we did that was stopped and talked to the property owners at 711, the Valis family. And I was informed the property wasn't for sale. So we had, we went through the process that you're aware of, surveyed our community, community, identified a site. And this is to reassure the public facilities district that we have a willing seller and that we're going to negotiate a purchase and sale. When we've got a lot of unanswered questions and details before we ever buy this piece of property, it's going to start with an appraisal so that we have a value for the property to propose a purchase and sale. Our ILA right now with the public facilities district calls for us to do a feasibility study right now. And Rice, Ferguson, Miller is recommending that we don't do that until we have a 30% design because our feasibility study right now would be speculative and not based on what the actual square footage is of the spaces are, what revenue will have a better understanding of what revenues can be generated from the facilities as we get farther along in the design. So right now I'm asking the public facilities district to amend that ILA to slide that feasibility study farther down in the process. We've got, got to get answers and negotiate a lease, you know, that with this property, the bank's property is currently, the bank is sitting on a D, part of it is sitting on a DNR lease and the bank is willing to assign that to us. I've got confirmation of that. And we need to negotiate either an assignment or our own lease with the, with DNR. And we intend to use that property likely differently. It is, is open space, but it's an important component to this. And it became very apparent yesterday morning when Nick's planning staff and I met with representatives in the bank, that our master planned project and our downtown subarea plan process aren't meshed as well as they need to be. And it's going to need some additional scope added to the GGLO body of work. And the bank agreed that they'd be willing to share in that expense with us. And likely that expense will get split three ways because I think the residential developer is going to want a seat at the table too. So we're, we're working on that piece and we'll be bringing that back. But I just want to share it with you. This is an exciting step, but my goodness, we have a lot of questions to answer and we have a lot of agreements that I need to bring back to you guys to get our community and our city council comfortable with where, where we're heading with this thing. So that's a long story related to a letter of intent. So Mr. Claussen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the letter of intent with Kitsap Bank related to the purchase of 619 Bay Street.
Second.
The motion by councilmember Kuchardi, was that second by councilmember Kuchardi? Claussen made the motion or was it Rosa?
No.
Claussen made the motion.
Kuchardi made the second.
Kuchardi made the second. Okay.
I think.
I got my Cs mixed up there maybe, but okay, I'm just confirming. So Brandy gets it right in the minutes. So a motion and a second, further discussion?
Yes.
I would.
Okay. Councilmember Ashby and then councilmember Lucarelli?
Yeah, I just, again, I appreciate the work that has gone into this. And the letter of intent does allow us to start negotiating with Kitsap Bank for the purchase of this property. And I know that the purchase and sale agreement will be a complicated document. But my question is, can you describe how we're going to do the negotiations? I know when we do our labor negotiations, we have a team, typically our finance director and our human resource manager and an attorney are all part of those negotiations. So how do you envision the negotiations for this purchase and sale to be processed?
Well, obviously, we're going to invite, involve our city attorney, Ms. Archer. Miss, Mr. Bond has been intricately involved in this and it involves money. So I'm assuming our, our, our finance director, you know, when we started this process in the site selection, we said we would have a monthly check in with the, with the, with the economic development committee. And I, and I, wherever I have an opportunity, I think I want to report on what's going on with this process with each and every one of the committee, committee, when it's committees, when it's appropriate. But I think as far as checking in, I think it's going to be potentially the finance committee and then, and then bringing it back. Once we've negotiated an agreement to the full council, obviously, because you'll need to approve it.
But we are doing a team approach as we do with our labor negotiations.
It's similar, but it's not necessarily the same. I don't think we're going to sit down in a room like we do in our, in our labor negotiations. I think Charlie's probably gonna probably has a template document that's a purchase and sale and, but there's some unique provisions like the leased land or if, if we were lucky and got what we're asking for from the legislature, a million dollars to buy this real estate. And you know, it's realistically, the bank is going to be in that building for another couple of years while they build their other building. You know, the legislature could require that I spend their money sooner than that. And in that scenario, I've had conversations already with the bank that they're willing to, to sell it to us and lease it back. So there could be some unique provisions in that. And I'm really seeing Charlie being the, the lead to that, but we're not going, I'm going to need your buy-in in the provisions that are in this document before it's agreed to. Did I answer that better the second time?
Right. Again, it's going to be a cooperative effort on the city's part with various departments coming together with their specific specialties and, and input. And I'm assuming that we will also have, council will offer some parameters for the committee to work with it, much as we do with the labor negotiations so that you don't have a blank checkbook.
I think ultimately the appraisal is going to determine the value and there won't be, you know, that's probably going to be our offer. But before we make that offer, of course, we're going to check in and say, here's, here's the, and hopefully we don't have an oh my God moment, it's worth that.
My understanding also is because this is a real estate transaction, those conversations that council will have will be an executive session. Is that correct?
Yes, they should.
For them, to consider the minimum price of real estate to be offered for sale or lease is something we could discuss. A purchase price is not necessarily something we can discuss, but the, I believe that there's a potential we can, we can have a conversation about the selection of the site and the, the terms of the agreement. That's typically my practice. Yes.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
Just a small point, and I'm not sure about this, but it seems that there's a redundancy in the first line, on behalf of the city of Port Orchard, and then you repeat, or it, on behalf of the city? Do you, does that, is that supposed to be like that? I found that a little awkward.
In the letter, where at?
The very first sentence. It's, it's a small thing.
On behalf of the city of Port Orchard, I am pleased to submit this letter of intent on behalf of, yeah, it's, you're right. It is, I'm going to blame Charlie.
It is a typo. I apologize.
Well, I just think a redundancy. Yeah.
The bank, the bank approved it though.
Okay, well.
We did repeat ourselves.
Thank you.
It is redundant. Councilmember Chang?
I have a general question about the acknowledgement on the second page where it, we're saying that the, we, the purchaser, where the seller will require ample time to design and construct and relocate. And I understand that we want to certainly collaborate with them. Um, in terms of the timeframe, we know what our timeframe is because it's been a public process. Are you aware of the bank working on, you know, will their timeframe mesh with ours? Or are they starting from scratch? I mean, I assume they've, they've been working on this.
No, we had a No, we had a, we had a, one of our first meetings yesterday with them is, in the, in the planning staff. And we've got a lot of work to do. That, that's, so there, 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 there's a lot of work to be done. They've got to design and permit and build a building. And we've got to make sure that the provisions on our code and our master plan work with what's proposed in this master plan for the housing and the community center and their headquarters. So we've, we've got a lot of work to do.
So the first domino is basically them exiting their building before we can construct ours.
Yes, they're not planning on leaving their building until their new building is constructed. Yes, Councilmember Kuchardi.
I was just going to say, we discussed this issue at the finance committee earlier today. And, you know, one of the important things that I think all of us need to pay attention to is obviously never lose sight of our, of our agreement with, with Kitsap Facilities District to make sure where everything is, is just kind of lined up with everything that we're obligated to. You know, this is going to be a very complicated process because of all of the moving parts. And so Charlie, if you have a template for this, this PSA, I'd love to see it. Sorry, Rob. But, you know, I just think, you know, and John Clausen said it best, you know, at the, at the finance committee meeting of just, we just need to make sure we're not out over, you know, over our skis and making sure that we're just paying attention to all of these different moving parts and we're not, you know, committing to anything. I love the idea of this LOI because it's, you know, it allows us to move forward without, you know, a binding document in place. And so I just think, you know, on behalf of the entire council, let's just, you know, really pay attention to every step of this process and just to make sure we don't get over our skis. And I like that we have the different checks and balances in place to discuss it, debate it, and make sure that we are doing everything in the, in the appropriate manner.
Great comment, Councilmember Kuchardi. And it's also important, and I've, know I've said this multiple times, and I'm going to say it a number more times too. Our commitment to the public facilities district is a three-legged stool. The community center, the bank headquarters and the housing, and we've got to deliver on all three elements or we don't get the money to build our community center. So we've got a 12 mil, we got $12 million at stake from, in public facilities dollars. And so we've got to get it right and we've got to deliver on all of the elements, including obviously the bank's headquarters. That's, that's, that's where it starts.
Here, if I could just add one point, I just wanted to clarify for council too. By retaining our firm, you get the full, you know, scope of our expertise. And we have a number of real estate attorneys who are specifically, will specifically assist with drafting that, creating that template and drafting that template, but template again is the wrong word since this is such a unique arrangement. But, you know, one of the, the partners that I have is exclusively with real estate, assisted with the Kitsap County Bethel Property transaction earlier this year, and they, they'll be assisting with the drafting of these documents as well. So.
Wonderful. Other questions, comments? We have a motion and a second on the floor to allow the mayor to sign the letter of intent with Kitsap Bank for the, for the bank's property. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, I will sign that letter tomorrow. All right, we, our last business item is the approval of the December 15th, 2020 council meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
To mayor, I move that we approve the minutes for the December 15th.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Clausen, second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. And I believe I will have one abstention by Councilmember Ashby this evening. So all in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention, Councilmember Ashby. All right, we are to our sole discussion item, which is the 2020 chest festival of chimes and lights, which was like no other chimes and lights festival and hopefully it won't be repeated.
I hope not. Brandy, is it possible for me to have a screen share? And I am trying to do a little PowerPoint presentation. Bear with me.
Yes, and I just made you co-host so you can share.
Okay, I'm going to try this. Can everybody see this?
No.
Okay, then I'm doing it wrong. Let's get through this real quick here. So sorry. What do I need to do differently? Um.
Sometimes you have to select a doc, if you have multiple documents open, you may have to select that document that you want to share.
Okay. Oh, please. Okay. You know what?
You might have to stop sharing and then start over from scratch. Sometimes once you get in, it doesn't allow you to be nimble, so you could stop and then start over again and try it again.
Okay, so I do screen share and then I go to my presentation. I can't get to it.
Was the presentation already open on your computer?
It's on my desktop.
But is it open? So open it first. Try that.
Okay.
And then stop sharing and then restart sharing and see if it, if it brings that up as an option to share with that file already open.
It's got to be open on your screen.
Okay, so the, it blocks, it blocks all of the other here. It does, it's supposed to?
Yes.
Can you see this now?
No.
Okay.
I see a message saying that the host disabled participants' screen sharing. I don't know which host it's referring to.
Okay, so you know what? It looks like I'm not going to be able to share, which is really sad because I spent a whole lot of time on this.
Hold it up in front of your screen.
Hey, Cindy, would you like to email it to Brandy real quick?
Yeah. Oh, I think I could do that. Okay, why don't we move on with whatever else needs to be done and I'll try doing that?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
And we'll move on to committee reports and the mayor's report, and then we'll circle back to this.
Thank you.
All right, finance committee is first and admit this evening, Councilmember Clausen, you want to, you have a report for us?
Sure, be happy to. Noah provided a breakdown of our sales tax receipts, which brings us through December of 2020, which I'm happy to report turned out in a positive format where just shy of a million dollars over for the biennium. And I think we were, what, about seven, almost eight percent for the year? So from that standpoint, it went well. We also, Noah shared with us that he has been working with one of our spires, if you will, to develop an app that will help community members to pay their utility bills and such online. And the mayor was our guinea pig in the test. He shared that they took money from him and they have not shut off his water yet. So we're claiming success with the performance of it. We asked if Noah could email out the information to each of us so that we too could be a little bit of a guinea pig while he's working on a rollout strategy for the community so that they can use it. And the mayor's reported that it was very user friendly, easy to use once you've got it set up for yourself. And it's doing well. The, the other thing we, we talked a little bit about is that historically the finance committee signs off on basically the expenditure list on each meeting. But since we've been with COVID and doing this virtually, we haven't really done it for a year. Noah reported that in his research, it's not really a requirement of anywhere that he can find other than it's a council resolution that is adopted that requires us to sign off on it. The only thing we're doing is signing off that we looked at it, it really requires full council action, which, for example, tonight we did when we approved the consent agenda, we as a council approved, and that's what Noah really needs. So we were talking about where the three of us will go in and sign all of the documents for 2020. But we're going to be bringing forward a revised resolution that allows a process for which the committee will receive the document and basically acknowledge it. It will still follow the normal process that coming to the full council for approval in each of our meetings. We also talked quite a bit about a formula that was presented to us on the sewer and water credit. If a developer was to provide the infrastructure necessary and how we would treat that investment and provide them credit. It's coming to the full council next week at the work studies. So we'll be able to share way more detail. Noah and the mayor have developed some examples of how that would actually work. And I think the three of us on the committee were supportive of the process and bringing it forward, obviously, for the full council's discussion. The, one of the, as Sean mentioned earlier, we also talked at length about the letter of intent that we just dealt with earlier and had a number of questions in that regard. There was another action that the committee had requested following the salary survey that we did for Olive City Hall. We asked if the, Debbie could do a quick look at the council's compensation and how it related to the PERS retirement system and what would be required if in fact we were able to be in the PERS retirement system. Basically, it came down to everybody, hold on to your socks, we're not making minimum wage. But we all kind of acknowledged that that was something that we were aware of when we signed up for the job. And we hopefully were not here because of the exorbitant pay that we don't receive. So essentially it showed that we're, we're being paid, I think, fairly compared to our fellow jurisdictions around and probably a little bit better than some, other than the data that we had for the other jurisdictions might be a little bit dated. So the committee's recommendation is basically to not do anything with it. We're fine with what we have now. And even though we won't qualify for PERS credit and retirement, once again, we're here to do the community's work and not try to retire from this job. So we did ask to have that document sent out to the rest of the council. We're not proposing any action with it. We just want you all to have that same information. If any of you want to bring it up for further discussion, and then we'll have to schedule it before either a work study or a council meeting. So that's pretty much it. And then the mayor shared just a couple of things. We talked briefly about some grant funding that we received, not necessarily, although we applied for, I think you said five different grants. We got one that out of one to five, we got number five. So as a result, we may be faced with some budget adjustments before too much longer so that we can move the project forward. And essentially we received funding for the construction of a roundabout at Bethel and Lincoln, I think it is mayor, if I remember correctly. Although he mentioned with wetlands, although it hasn't been designed yet, it may be our first peanut versus a roundabout. But we will be probably obligated to do the design work and then we can use the grant funding for the construction. So we'll have to do some budget adjustments for that, but that's yet to come. And then he shared briefly with more to come on the expenses that have been generating almost daily by DEM as a result of the COVID pandemic and all the extra work that they're doing. And that there's going to be some needed adjustments in the funding to support DEM. And that he shared the formula for which the city of Port Orchard would typically contribute to and it's a population-based formula. We would be about 6% of the obligation and the obligation, the majority of the extra costs are being covered by FEMA. We here locally would be responsible for about 25% of the costs. So the city would be responsible for 6% of that 25%, but we don't have solid numbers tied to it at this point, other than mayor shared that it could be somewhere between 25 and $3,000 a month for, through September, I believe it was. So more to come. Hopefully they will also be able to secure grant funding that might have an effect in lowering that. But we'll have to wait and see. That was pretty much it, committee. Did I miss anything or forget anything?
No, great job.
Mayor, do you have anything that you want to add?
No, other than when I get to my mayor's report, I got the, the worst case numbers and there are a lot more than 3,000.
Well, don't, don't share that with us tonight. So thank you.
All right, I can, thank you, John, for your report. Economic Development and Tourism Hasn't Met, there weren't any agenda items and their next meeting is scheduled for February 8th. Utilities Hasn't Met, but they are meeting on January 19th. And the meeting date for the sewer advisory committee hasn't been set yet. Land Use had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, but I believe that's been canceled due to a lack of agenda items. So they will be meeting in February. Transportation meets January 26th. And Lodging Tax says it's going to meet in February.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay. And Festival Chimes and Lights, we're going to try to get to you soon. So do you want to give that slide? Brandy, did you get that PowerPoint? Is that a yes, Brandy? Do you want to share that on your screen and then maybe Cindy walks through it and then I'll give the mayor's report?
Brandy, can you, yeah. Okay, so Port Orchard's non-event in a COVID-restricted year, our festival of chimes and lights basically look like this. Next. Our Christmas tree. A majority of chimes and lights this year was her Christmas tree and the decorations, the holiday tree. On the left you see Bill spent some time looking for the right tree and it transformed into a gorgeous tree. We are still looking at having a live tree each year. When we priced an artificial tree with their shelf life of five to seven years, it still pays to go with a live tree. Next. The decorated tree contest was just really the main event. We had the following winners. They're on our website. It was just mentioning the first place winners. The Honorable Mansion, which is Port Orchard Helpers, also received the POPSAS People's Choice Award. Next.
I don't see the mayor's tree on that list.
I know, right? It didn't, so, so the best vintage tree, Port Orchard Market. Next. Most creative tree, many pass acupuncture. These, these photos don't do them justice, so sorry. Next. And the best business representative tree was Scott McLendon's Hardware. Next. So looking down Bay Street with all the trees lit and the icicle lights, really beautiful. Our suggestion as a committee that we keep the icicle lights up at least through the entire month of January. If you look down the streets right now, it's very gloomy. Next. Giving trees were a tradition that was started last year and has grown. Councilman Clausen sponsored the tree for the Friendship Club and many, there were probably at least four or five trees with giving to. Councilman Clausen sponsored the tree for the Friendship Club and many, there were probably at least four or five trees with giving to as giving trees and people really did take things from them a lot. Next. We even had some memorial trees. This one stood out. It was lovely for Candy Kingston in memory of a nice woman. Next. So special thanks to KSAP Bank, the Port of Bremerton, and all the businesses who helped to make Port Orchard glow merry and bright. Next. The suggestion for the committee is that we go back to viewing neighborhood displays for the community decorating. The neighborhood displays individual homes and businesses, even though we didn't do we didn't do drive-throughs this year because of COVID and because we were thinking that we would go to just having photographs sent in to judge from really isn't working very well. And so the committee is hoping we can go back to the council and whomever driving around through the neighborhoods to view and judge. We hope in the future that Port Orchard will someday be known as the Little City of Lights. Next. The Fathoms Royalty spent a great deal of time downtown this year promoting the tree decorating contest and we thank them for it. Next. And Port Orchard wished everybody holiday cheer to all through the beautiful displays all around. Again, special thanks to Public Works. This photo, of course, doesn't do it justice, but it was beautiful and we had so many comments of people just really enjoying our displays. So thank you very much.
Cindy, I just want to acknowledge you, you put your heart and soul into this every year and I just want to personally acknowledge you that, and thank you for all the hard work you do and for this festival.
I'll second that.
I was gonna say I'll third that with the ditto. Several times our grandkids were over and we took them down to see the lights. And it was just beautiful. It's been a wonderful idea for what, three or four years now with the adopted trees and it just keeps getting better and better.
Thank you. Thank everyone for contributing.
All right. Thank you for your report, Cindy. Outside agencies and committees, Beck, that's primarily you and I.
Yeah, we haven't met since mid-December. So I don't have anything new to report. We should have reports in February when we get back active again.
Okay, I've got my, I had my Super Tuesday here last week and so I'll give you what I know. And this Public Health Board, I was the chair last year of that agency and that was a gift that just kept on giving all year long. And fortunately, last week I got to hand the gavel off to Commissioner Dorito for that agency and what we heard yesterday, and it's already probably dated information about the vaccine rollout, the quote from the public health nurse that's in charge of that was, "We're building the plane while we're flying it." This was the analogy she used. And KSAP as of last week had administered 40% of the vaccines it had received. And that was the fifth best performance in the state. So we're it's gonna get better, but we're stumbling and bumbling a bit in administering, getting the vaccine rolled out and administered. There's no doubt about it. So and the four counties that were ahead of us were all much smaller counties. So it's the larger counties, it's becoming, it's much more difficult. So I know Mr. Clausen's been involved in making a facility available in the last week for the Public Health District to help in this matter. And there's just, there's a lot of work going on to it and we're going to get there, but the first few weeks weren't going as planned. I'll definitely share that. Department of Emergency Management, Mr. Clausen shared, yes, there's a funding formula for this and the information I got today at the board meeting gave me the low side. You know, that they felt that this was going to be, and I said, I'm not going to go to my city council with the low side number. I need the worst, I need the range. What's the worst case scenario and the best case scenario? And in the best case scenario, so last year there was all this, these grants and federal money and we're likely to get more of that, but right now we don't have it. Okay, and so that 25%, DEM is covering, excuse me, FEMA is covering 75% of this. Our countywide responsibility in the worst case scenario is $1.7 million. We had our 6%, so that's our 25%. Our 6% of that would be $102,000, January through September. In the best case scenario that we get the grants, it's about $46,000. And some of this has to do, so there was, what was shared with me earlier was about $2,000. That's only the employee side of it. There's one-time expenditures related to equipment and materials that weren't shared with me earlier. So more to come on this and I hope we get more federal aid to reduce this expenditure, but I believe strongly that we need to pay our proportionate share of this emergency response, that we need to be doing the testing that we're doing. We need to help with the vaccination sites and those are a role that we need to be involved in and fund our proportional share with, share of. And I hope you share that sentiment with me in regards to that. And I probably add these, as I get this more formalized, probably as a discussion item at our council meeting on the 20, whatever the last meeting of the month is, just so that I get, get some buy-in from you guys, you know, on this process. So South Sea Transit, I am now the proud chair of the transit, KSAP Transit for, I think, my third time. Is in my time at the city and where I understand that Southworth Ferry is very close. We have a boat and we need an agreement with Washington State Ferries to launch out of that out of Southworth and it should happen sometime this month. Is that an accurate statement, Mr. Clausen?
No.
Okay.
No, it's not. I said the first quarter.
Okay.
And there's additional items such as paint on the parking lot that we have not had the best weather to do. So there's a couple things that we need to complete first as well.
So first quarter and some paint needs to go on the ground so that we know where to park the buses. So, all right, I'm also involved in the GORST Coalition, which is trying, we believe the Navy is a part of this solution and in trying to get federal dollars to solve GORST. Their ask, you know, we put $5,000 in the budget and that's likely what they're going to get, but the ask from the coalition was for us to contribute $50,000 and I haven't seen the ILA that we saw at Transit. Nobody has sent it to me formally yet. So as soon as I get that, I will be happy to share it with the council and have our legal counsel review that ILA and potentially have you guys adopt that. But I found it a little alarming that the number of 50,000 and they've softened the language in the draft we saw at Transit from what I initially saw that required the $50,000 contribution. And it was more along the lines of you could pay what you can afford to pay. So more to come on that. Required to report policy changes to you and particularly around personnel policies. So we've been, Debbie has been working to update a number of policies. Removal of the now expired Families First Coronavirus Response Act from our lead policy. Title updates to reflect Debbie's promotion from HR Coordinator to HR Manager. Also corrected a number of other oversights and past titles related to Finance Director and Treasurer. Administrative Network Administrator. It was our current IT person and it was previously a land technician. Also updates to the Deputy Police Chief's Job Description for that position we just filled there. And today I saw updated job description for our police officers that we're getting ready to recruit for and just reflecting what's currently in state law for requirements for a police officer. That's all I have for the, for the mayor's report and we'll roll to Mr. Clausen.
Yeah, I just wanted to share some information. KSAP Transit took over the operation, actually driving the vessels between Port Orchard and Bremerton of our ferry service there. And my normal response when my Marine Service Director comes in to tell me the news of what's going on is it's a boat. Any of you that have gone boats, you probably can understand. We have three vessels devoted to the Port Orchard Bremerton Service. The Carlisle is currently sitting on the beach in Port Townsend with just a bit over a million dollars worth of refurbishment work underway. I think they have last reporter received that they finished taking all of the bad stuff off. And they're now starting to put all of the good stuff on. So we probably won't see the Carlisle until March. The Waterman, which is the new electric hybrid vessel, the first hybrid passenger ferry in Puget Sound is experiencing some mechanical issues and it's tied up at the dock and not usable. Which leaves us the Admiral Pete, which doesn't, because of COVID and the reduced capacity is not meeting the needs. And we know that you will probably see next week, first of the week, possibly even the latter part of this week. One of Argus's Good Time Three vessels. We're going to be chartering that boat to provide some additional capacity. If, if we had a problem with the Admiral Pete, which I remind everybody, it's a boat. We're completely out of boats that we can use for Port Orchard. So that's why we're chartering one of Argus's boats to get in here. One with two boats will have the capacity we need. But in the real chance that the Admiral Pete goes down, we'll still have a vessel that we can utilize to run back and forth. We looked at the possibility of putting bus service on to supplement the capacity. Travel time is rather extensive. Instead of a 10-minute crossing, you're looking at more like a 25-minute bus ride. And with the reduced capacity because of COVID, we probably have to put four, well, actually upwards of six buses on, just to provide the capacity necessary just during the commute period. So that's not really feasible. That's why we're doing the charter. So I wanted to share that with the council so that when you see an Argus boat running back and forth between Port Orchard and Bremerton, you'll know it's supposed to be there.
John, have you been running from Annapolis to Bremerton or have you? Has that been suspended?
No, we suspended that primarily because with the reduced capacity that I had to put on the boats because of COVID. We took the Annapolis boat and moved it over to Port Orchard so that we have a boat leaving every 15 minutes instead of once every 30 minutes. By having a more frequent departure during the commute hour, we were able to bring in the additional capacity that we needed and we bus people from Annapolis that park in the Annapolis Dock down to Port Orchard and back. So that's why you don't see a boat get out of Annapolis.
But that 15-minute service is predicated on John having two boats and he doesn't have two boats. He has one boat.
Did I mention it's a boat? So yes.
All right. Thank you for that update, John. All right. Department Directors Reports. Brandy, do you have anything to share with us this evening?
No, just Happy New Year. That's all I have.
One thing that Brandy and I are looking into at our last Transit Board meeting, we talked about changing the version of Zoom that we have and John, it's called web something. It's a different version of Zoom that makes the council. And we don't have a lot of public coming. It still allows the public to view, but they aren't on the same screen as us. If we had, you know, sometime this year, we're going to talk about utility rates and I bet we get a lot of people coming and if we're still meeting in this fashion, we'd have screens and screens and screens of you know, participants. And so I found out when we were talking about this at Transit, we're the only city in the county that's not using that form of Zoom. So we're looking into that and we'll likely make that change next month is what I'm, with next month's meetings and it'll work, work the same for us. It's the same link, it's a link, we go into it, the public just has a different link. And then when we go to do public comment, Brandy will act like Scotty and beam them into the meeting and then beam them back out to the other planet. So it's pretty slick. So and that, and the reason, you know, other agencies have had problem with people, you know, people have been very respectful in our meetings, but that hasn't been the case or the experience in other jurisdictions and people bomb their meetings and then hijack their meetings. So so best to be, I guess, proactive. Charlie, do you have anything to share?
Yes, just briefly, the governor's proclamations, I'm sure you've all been keeping tabs, but the open public meetings proclamation expires on January 19th. The most recent proclamation does modify certain terms of the pre-existing proclamations, but the overall remains the same as long as we're in an area that continues to have an uptick in rates related to the pandemic, then you're still, we continue to be prohibited from having in-person meetings. But the governor will revisit that on January 19th. And the other key proclamation that is, was extended is the shut off of residential customer prohibition related to utilities and that was actually extended to April 30th this year.
Thank you. And I see Councilmember Deener joined us. So welcome. Mr. Bond?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Chief Brown?
Yes, thank you. Actually, this is middle of Donna's second week and she's, she's doing fantastic already, but she's definitely adjusting to a different pace and style of work. We're continuing to kind of plug away on accreditation. We're approaching the 60% mark. And a lot of that will probably speed up a little bit. We did have Stanley Security in this week installing the upgrades to our property room for internal surveillance cameras, key card access and an alarm. So we're plugging right along. So thank you.
Mr. Crocker, you have anything to share?
I got nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Dorsey?
I have nothing.
Nothing. And I see Chief Fawcett from Fire District Seven. Thanks for joining us tonight. Do you have any words of wisdom to share with us?
I don't. I thought my video, there it is. No, thanks and Happy New Year. Looking forward to another great year and just keep plugging away.
Wonderful. All right. We have a meeting later in the week. Looking forward to talking to you and I think you're aware, as Mr. Bond shared with me, we got a little reprieve on the building code. We've got a few more months to work on that. So it's not as urgent as it once was. So
That's good. That's good. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us tonight. Anything for the good of the order? Councilmember Rospeppy?
A couple of things I wanted to thank the chief for sharing the strategic plan to everyone. I thought it was really good and thank you. Mark, you didn't comment on the selection of the, I know it'll come later to council on the selection of the Design Committee for the Lincoln Roundabout, but that was done this week. Very interesting, especially since we got some funding for that. And last of all, I'd like to thank the AWC, the County Commissioners and especially our mayor for the letter that was sending out, that was sent out condemning the violence and calling for peaceful transition and stability. I think that's always important to do. We had a very interesting last week. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Councilmember Shane?
Just wanted to mention that the severe weather shelter at the corner
Just wanted to mention that the severe weather shelter at the corner of Sydney and Kitsap is actually open this evening. Despite the limited capacity due to COVID requirements, it is still operating. It lost a lot of volunteers because many of the available volunteers are in the. Vulnerable age groups. However, they did find a way to fund some additional monitors. The volunteer hours are longer. They went from five hours to seven and a half. And last night they had eight people. So. Even though it's not freezing, the shelter is open when there's an inch or more of rain. And I think it's, 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 they've, it's great that they're open because there are a lot of people who are not quite so wet this evening.
Yes, thanks for sharing that. Councilmember Clausen.
Yes, just a quick question. Jay, I don't know if you went into City Hall to pick up your token of appreciation or not, but if you haven't. Bring a hand truck. And second thing, Mr. Mayor. Just didn't want you to forget about citizens' comment for you.
We've got citizen comment and then we also have an executive session planned. So. We're not, our work isn't done this evening, but thank you for reminding me. And if I could, just two housekeeping issues. Councilmember Lucarelli and Councilmember Deener, there's still that resolution to sign for. Retired Deputy Chief Schuster. Then we're needing your two signatures and then we're done. So.
I will be there tomorrow. That totally slipped my mind. So I'll be there tomorrow.
Perfect. Greatly appreciated. All right, we are to our second citizen comment. Period. Is there anyone wishing to address the city council? All right, hearing none. I am going to. Close the citizen comment period. We are headed into an executive session pursuant to RCW 4230 1101I. The city will hold an executive session regarding pending litigation. The city council will not take any action after. The executive session, but I will return to adjourn the meeting. So we don't see.
How long was that executive session for, Mayor?
Charlie, how long do we need?
I would say 10 minutes.
10 minutes. Okay. And Chief Brown, I don't need you. Sure call Nick whether you want to. Come along or not. So I think Noah and Mark. Should be there. So. And looks like all the members of the public are gone. Can you stop the recording, Brandy?